Ms. Catherine Lucero and myself, Charlie Bustillos. Mr. Cruz Ochoa, oh, I'm sorry. Catherine's not hearing it. Cruz Ochoa will not be able to attend this meeting but his excuse. Trustee Ramírez, will you please introduce the ROTC for this evening?
Thank you. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the pledges of allegiance, and then posting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by the junior ROTC color guard from Isleta High School. The color guard commander is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Ethan Swan. The other color guard members are Cadet Second Lieutenant Adam Martinez, Cadet Major Zachary Gomez, and Cadet Private First Class Kevin Pena. The pledge leader is Cadet Second Lieutenant Eric Isaías from Isleta High School. Will you please stand for the presentation of colors, the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Texas Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence? Please remain standing until the cadets have departed.
Order. March, left, right, left, 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 right, left. March time, march. Color guard, up. Left, face. Present, up.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, please join me in the pledging of the Texas flag. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible. Please join me in the moment of silence. Thank you.
Order, up. Left, power, march, left, right, left, left. Color guard, up. Order, up. Color guard, report. Power, march, left, right, left, left. Color guard, up. Center, face, right, face. Power, march, left, right, left, left.
Ms. Mathieson, do we have citizens' input?
Yes, sir, we do. We have Alejandro Torres. The topic is mask mandate.
Thank you for letting me speak. I would like to voice my concern about mask mandates and the COVID testing. I have two children right now that are attending YISD in Scottsdale Elementary. While I have tried contacting De La Torre about this matter, I was told that he would call me back, and as of now, he hasn't called me back. So this tells me that he's not concerned about issues that parents might have, and that is why I am here. I don't know why we're still talking about this, and the COVID test on children is a harmful thing, especially when the children themselves are doing the test. But who cares? As the YISD has put and sent out a letter, they're not liable for any action or injuries that might occur to my child and as a result of this, of her participation. My seven-year-old told me that her teacher has said if at least five children in her class consent to do the testing, that all the children in her class will have to do the testing. I called her in regards to this matter, and she argued with me about why I want my, I don't want my child to be tested. Even this afternoon, my children were yelled at by a teacher in the hallway telling them, "Why aren't you wearing a mask?" I would call it bullying. My question is this: Why is this being pushed in this district? And what is the district getting out of it? Also, masks are not effective according to the data that is shown. The expert who said since the beginning not to wear them. Today, it was reported that COVID cases are down and that 1.1 million vaccines have been given here in El Paso. So if the people that are fully vaccinated, vaccinated, why do they need to wear a mask? And why more testing? I had to pull out my daughter from high school, from Eastwood High, to place her into a private school due to harassment and being humiliated by her teachers and the principals for not wearing a mask. Enough is enough, and in the same way that you might not want to comply with Governor Abbott and his mandate, the law, we also will not comply as well. Thank you.
We have Mark Enriquez regarding masks.
Good evening. I just wanted to ask you and maybe address the people here also, how many of y'all have children in the district? Well, that answers that. I think if, if some don't want to, you shouldn't be forcing them to wear masks. If some are afraid for their children and want them to wear masks, they should. And if they don't want to, you should just quit pushing it. And I also want to say for anybody that is against the masks, we need to get together after this meeting and decide who we want to replace these people with. Thank you.
Dr. De La, Dr. De La Torre, do we have any reports on this evening, for this evening?
Yes, Vice President Bustillos, members of the board, we've got our monthly COVID-19 update. This time, I'd turn the presentation over to Mrs. Lindley Leeper, and she'll go through the most recent information surrounding COVID-19 in the Isleta Independent School District.
Good evening, Vice President Bustillos, Dr. De La Torre, and members of the board. So, yes, it's up on the board. Tonight, we're going to talk briefly about the COVID indicators for the region that represent how we are faring within the community. We'll look at vaccine statistics and then talk a little bit about rapid testing. So I'm pleased to report that for the last 12 days as of yesterday, we have been in the green. This is tremendous because we hadn't seen green since last spring, actually, and I believe as of today, we're probably in the 13th day of green. These indicators taken as a whole indicate that COVID is generally on the decline, and I think as we look at this next slide, you can see why. We have over 87 or over 86% of age 12 and older have one dose at least of the COVID vaccine compared to just barely 70% for the state. When you look at fully vaccinated age 12 and over, we are at nearly 75% compared to the state at 59%. Those over the age of 65 have at least one dose, 97.1% of the population compared to nearly 87% statewide, and then fully vaccinated age 65 and older is nearly 89% compared to 78%. I think that is demonstrative of why we are seeing the green status and COVID conditions on the decline. When we talked about rapid testing last month, I told you that we were three tenths of 1% positivity across the district. This month, we are down to two tenths of a percent. Last year in the spring, we were at five tenths of a percent, so you can see that overall, even positivity among our students, and keep in mind, this is primarily unvaccinated students, represent a positivity rate of two tenths of a percent. So when we look at the Bynax Now program, as you can see at the top, it says it's been discontinued, and that's because in the past, Texas Division of Emergency Management through TEA have provided all of our COVID testing supplies. So that includes not only the rapid test of roughly 40,000 a month, but the PPE, the swabs, the reagent, the gowns, the mask. All of those supplies have been provided to us at no cost to us, and we weren't required to deal with a vendor. During the time that we were offering the rapid testing, we developed our own internal tracking system through Biz Portal where our nurses keep track of our data, actually anyone can that has access, and then we had the State's app. The reason we had to develop our own is because the state didn't ever provide data back to us, so we couldn't tell what's happening in our own system. That has all ceased. And so as of last week and effective actually today, TEA has now contracted with independent vendors. So they've gone out and conducted a solicitation, and they've hired four or awarded to maybe four or five vendors across the state that we can do business with, basically a piggyback off of their co-op. They are giving us the money to do it, but the difficulty lies in now we're dealing with a vendor and we're going to completely start over with all tracking. So it doesn't go through TDM and it doesn't work with our portal. At two tenths of a percent positivity among the unvaccinated, with seven positive cases this entire week, I would recommend that we cease the rapid testing now. We're in the green, back where we were last spring, two tenths of a positivity rate, and with six or seven students representing the positive population, I think it's time and it's a good benchmark to say, "We have cleared the hurdle, we can discontinue this." I can tell you that our nurses and staff are very tired, and you've probably heard that from them. This is a huge burden on campus staff to conduct testing Monday mornings. What we do have on hand should last us through October, maybe even into November, so that if a student is on campus or we have an athletic event and we think they need testing, we have the ability to continue that through probably the end of October or November. So that is actually all of the COVID update, so I can take your questions now.
Yes, sir. Ms. Ramírez?
Ms. Leeper, thank you very much. Just a question. I noticed that, I know Isleta High School, week one, they went to Clovis, I think, to play a game, and I noticed last week, I can't remember, somebody else went out of town. Is it possible to hang on to some of those testing kits for those kids that go out of town, especially when they go to places where compliance is very poor?
So I'm having a hard time understanding you with the mask over the microphone. I'm sorry. Will you ask, so I heard Isleta High and somebody else traveled?
Yeah, Isleta traveled to Clovis, I think, week one of football, and then last week, I don't remember which school traveled as well to play out of town. Now I'm just curious if we're going to reduce the amount of testing based, because we have less kits, is it possible for us to reserve some of those kits for, for teams, whether they're athletics or academics or whatever, if they go out of town and come back?
Yes, so keep in mind, at the high school level, with an 80% fully vaccinated rate, we only test them if they're a high-risk close contact and they're, and they're symptomatic, because otherwise, they've got the flu, they've got a cold, then we'll look at them. But generally, they're vaccinated, so we are not testing them on a surveillance basis. We're only looking now at those who are unvaccinated and a high-risk close contact that may be symptomatic.
Okay, thank you.
But in the other part of your question, yes, sir, we do have tests that can be held on reserve, and in fact, we have one athletic team this week, a seventh-grade team whose game will be canceled this weekend, just because we found one positive and then he had been near his teammates. So we do use it for that purpose. Yes, sir. Mr. Rosales.
I'm going to keep this very simple. In regards to being on the green zone, and your recommendation is that we stop the screening, is that correct?
Stop it as a surveillance tool, so instead of doing it every single Monday morning, regardless for all students, that we use it strictly on an as-needed basis, generally based on the nurse's assessment, or we know there's a positive on an athletic team and we want to make sure everyone else is okay.
And God forbid, and I'm, I'm just looking at the, at the possibility and hope it does not happen, but what happens if we start going north again?
I have the ability to get tests, so very similarly-
Through that testing system, excuse me, through that testing system, would be, would we be able to monitor it and then put us back on track?
Yes, so the challenge will be not getting the test. I can get the test from several people, and we have an allocation to do that. The challenge will be getting the data into our system. We have the most talented TIS team in the state, so without making Ms. Gloria have a heart attack, I'm going to say they can do it if the, if the need arises.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Leeper.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. De La Torre, do you guys have any question?
Do we have any questions from Ms. Champagne tonight? Ms. Champagne, it was easy night tonight? No questions?
Yes, sir. Good night.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
We will now, we will now discuss the agenda items as listed in the proposed notice for regular meeting of Isleta ISD Board of Trustees for September 15, 2021, and related recommendation motions with the superintendent and executive cabinet, and receive responses to questions and/or requests for additional information through the superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on set items at the September 15, 2021 Regular Board Meeting Please stop me if you have any questions or wish to pull any items. Consent. Minutes of Board of Trustee Workshop, Regular Board Meeting, August 25, 2021, 6:00 p.m. Monthly, monthly financial update as of July 2021. Budget amendments requiring board approval. Approval amendments to YISD contract number 2020-01-08 with KEV Group, Inc.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, Mr. Hagerty?
I had a quick question on that one. I was just curious how those are working out out of the Parkland area.
With the test campuses that were utilized primarily Parkland Middle and in your feeder pattern, they've been working very well. In fact, part of this contract amendment is to allow us to buy more of the point-of-sale devices, because we expect and we're already receiving requests from the campuses that have piloted the program, that they're going to want more. We're pleased.
Thank you.
So what exactly are you using for, what locations are you using them at on the campuses?
So right now, it's primarily used for like sales of a uniform or things like that. Eventually, we would like to use it for other things, any kind of parent fee that they need to pay on behalf of the student. We expect to grow the program to give them a point-of-sale process at the campus where they don't have to come here to bring cash and to do things like that. So right now, it's very small. We intend to grow it so that it will cover more of those student and parent-based purchases.
Thank you. Any other questions? Policy items. CFE local payroll procedures, salary deductions and reductions. Yes, Ms. Woodruff?
So on that one, that whole thing was just a little bit confusing to me. I know we don't have specific companies picked out that are going to be participating in this yet, but could we explain maybe how those companies are going to be picked after we, if we do approve this deduction?
Thank you. Ms. Woodruff, to answer your question, we, the superintendent can give us, this, this policy allows the superintendent to design a process whereby we would pick any vendor or solicit for any vendor. So that process has not been all detailed, but it gives the superintendent the authority to put it together. I think it depends on how many are out there, how competitive they are, and so we would design, the superintendent would design a process for that, and then there would be also an evaluation process for that. And it's a little bit different from what we do with, when we're spending our own district dollars for goods and services that the district is acquiring. But there would be a process designed, and ultimately, you would come back to the board for a decision on whether this is something they want to enter into a contract on this or they don't, and which, which vendor, if any.
Okay, thank you. That explains it to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Let's move on. The next item revision, policy EIF, administration would like to pull this agenda item off and bring it back at a later date. Now we move on to the action items. Extension of emergency paid sick leave for COVID-related purposes. Approve, approve architecture fees to BP 1907 Riverside High School, CTE additions and renovations. Any questions? Number three, construction methodology for BP 1907 Riverside High School, CTE additions and renovations. BP 1910 Rio Bravo Middle School, Parkland, Aniseta High School HVAC upgrade and life cycle projects, and BP 1913 Valer High School Health Magnet Women, Young Women's Leadership Academy, and Tejas School of Choice HVAC upgrade and life cycle projects.
I had a couple of quick questions on that one.
Yes, Mr. Hagerty.
With the, in regard to Parkland, is, will this be for the 400 and 500 halls? Do you guys know?
Sorry, you're going to have to-
Sorry.
In regards to Parkland, will this be for the 400 and 500 halls?
Yes, so as you can see, there's Wyla on here and Tejas. Those are non-bond HVAC projects that need to take place. If you haven't heard it yet, you may very well hear from parents who are unhappy about the heat in those particular campuses. In order to expedite getting HVAC done and getting the design finished, if I do a CSP, design has to be 100% complete before I can bid the project. If I bring design on now and I bring a CMAR on at the same time, we can phase as design is being completed. And our goal is to get to those campuses where the heat and that 400 and 500 wing is brutal and try to get those addressed as soon as possible. My hope is spring, but I will caution you, even though I think we can get design done that soon, and even though I believe we can get the CMAR ready to go, if we can't get materials, if I can't get rooftop units, if I can't get lumber and steel and all of those things that go into that package, it may be next fall before those actually get completed. But this allows us to expedite it and move quickly to try to address those heat issues.
Thank you. Ms. Leeper, on that one, what's the temperature of the products? What are you, what are you thinking, we're going to be able to get those HVACs going? Is there a shortage? Do you see anything?
Yes, there's, there's a shortage in anything that has to do with steel, sheet metal, all of those kinds of things, and then roofing materials are in very short supply. We've actually experienced challenges on current projects where we're having to negotiate and really hammer at vendors trying to get those in, and I didn't hear your first question about the temperature? Is that what you said?
No, that, I was just saying the temperature, the, of how, how it looks throughout the scope, what it looks like.
It's, it's rough.
I can imagine.
It really is, and we thought it would come down, then when, as the pandemic eased and manufacturing started up again, we thought it would get better. Delta came, the Delta variant arose, manufacturing slipped again, and so right now, honestly, I can't say what it will be like in six weeks. But regardless, with this particular item, I can be ahead of that curve, so as soon as manufacturing picks up, a CMAR that's onboard can place the orders for the equipment, much like we did at Hank's and Bel Air High, where we ordered steel, and we ordered all those materials well before the pandemic manufacturing crunch hit.
And are we, are they staying hold to their contracts? Because I know with the products, I know we've had increases all over the place. How's that going?
So if they were already awarded, they're bound by it.
Okay.
Right? So we've ordered those. With the ones we're quoting now, they'll give us 30 days.
Yeah.
And they're not wanting to hold prices much longer than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Let's move on. Consent, consent items. The order of agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic motion and a second on the consent agenda items listed on the agenda as recommended by administration?
Mr. Vice President, I move to approve the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration.
Go, cast your vote. Am I on the right? Can't cast vote. See, what happens, you take over and you, you forget what to do. Thank you. The mover was Ms. Woodruff, and the second was?
Mike Rosales.
Mr. Rosales. And it is approved, five to zero. Next, we go to the policy items. The order of the agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic motion and second on the policy items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration? I have a second by Mr. Rosales and motion by Mr. Shane Hagerty.
Yes, sir, I move to approve CFEA local payroll procedures, salary deductions and reductions as recommended by administration.
It's the wrong one. On the policy items, where?
I guess I could read it from the sheet.
That's the way that. But we're good. Okay. Everybody cast their votes? Yes. Mr. Rosales was second, Mr. Hagerty was the mover. Well, everybody vote. It's approved, five yes, zero no. Next is the action items. Extension of emergency paid sick leave for COVID-related purposes. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion? Any discussion? Have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve a resolution as presented extending emergency paid sick leave provisions related to COVID-19 effective July 1st through 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
The motion is Ms. Woodruff, and the second is Mr. Hagerty. We have five in favor, zero opposed. We have five in favor, zero opposed. Number two, approve archi, architectural fees to BP 1907 Riverside High School CTE additions and renovations. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion? Have a second, Mike, Mr. Hagerty. I move to approve authority regarding contract awarded on BP 1907 Riverside High School CTE HVAC and lives, life cycle additions and renovations to ASA architectures, architects for architectural services for a fee of 6.5% of the total construction cost. All votes are in. This passes in favor, five yes and zero opposed. Number three, construction methodology for BP 1907 Riverside High School CTE addition of renovations, BP 1910 Rio Bravo High School, Parkland and Isleta High School HVAC upgrades and life sc, life cycle projects, and BP, yeah, BP 1913 Baller High School Health Magnet, Young Women's Leadership Academy, and Tejas School of Choice HVAC upgrade and life cycle projects. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no, if no further discussion, may I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Ramírez and a second by Mr. Hagerty.
Mr. Vice President, I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to use the construction manager risk methodology for BP 1907 Riverside High School CTE additions and renovations project, BP 1910 Rio Bravo Middle School, Parkland and Isleta High Schools' HVAC upgrade and life cycle projects, and BP 1913 Baller High School Health Magnet, Young Women's Leadership Academy, and Tejas School of Choice HVAC upgrades and life cycle projects.
Thank you, Mr. Ramírez. And I, I, I just want to say, we need that HVAC. So, thank God this is coming through. Thank you. Now, closed session. The Board of Trustees has determined that the closed, a closed, sorry.
You gotta sit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna see if it was too late to amend the motion that if we only get one HVAC, that it goes to Parkland.
There you go. We had five favor in favor and zero opposed. This passes. Now, moving on. The Board of Trustees has determined that a closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the item set forth in a post-it agenda for, for this date. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, including but not limited to the section and purpose covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code 5551.071, 72, 73, 74, 76, 82, 1, 127, 821, 83, and 84. Should any final action decision or vote be required with the regards of the matter considered in closed session, the final action decision or vote shall be in an open meeting or subsequent public meeting with notice. The board, the board will now go into closed session in the real grand room. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Vice President, I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to use the construction manager risk methodology for BP 1907 Riverside High School CTE additions and renovations project, BP 1910 Rio Bravo Middle School, Parkland and Eastlata High Schools HVAC upgrade and life cycle projects, and BP 1913 Baylor High School Health Magnet, Young Women's Leadership Academy and Teja School of Choice HVAC upgrades and life cycle projects. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, and I just want to say we need that HVAC. So, thank God this is coming through. Thank you.
Yes.
Now, closed session. The Board of Trustees has determined that a closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the item set forth in a post-it agenda for this date. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, including but not limited to the section and purpose covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code 551.071, 72, 73, 74, 76, 82, 127, 821, 83, and 84. Should any final action decision or vote be required with the regards of the matter considered in closed session, the final action decision or vote shall be in an open meeting or subsequent public meeting with notice. The Board will now go into closed session in the Rio Grand Room. Thank you.